Okay, we're gonna call this meeting to order. Can you call the roll, please?
Ms. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Levinworth?
Yes.
Okay, this meeting is a meeting of the West Yaga Local School District Board of Education in public for the purpose of conducting the West Yaga Local School District's business, and is not to be considered a public community meeting. There is a time for public participation during the meeting as indicated in the agenda. Do I?
We don't need another call.
Okay, alright, so can you stand for the pledge, please? And pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Sorry, I'm gonna be moving slower, because I only have the one hand. Arthritis in her thumb. I'm doing the best I can.
Yes, ma'am.
Alright, so tonight we'll be talking about the 2026 tax budget. I know it's hard to believe that it's 2026, but we're gonna go with that. This is something we do annually. This will certify, send this over to our county auditor, who will certify the taxes that we'll use for next year's budget. So this is a first step in that budget process that we'll be taking on starting in January. First thing we want to look at is this tax year. So we're always behind. So if you look at this, the tax year that we are looking at and basing a lot of our estimates on is 2024. So that's the last year that we had those taxes assessed. So the 2024 assessment was $1.2 billion. This was about a $14 million increase. And that's really through inside millage, new construction, those kind of things that we had during the district, or a 1.2% increase in our property values. If you can recall, in 2023, that was that big increase that we had, the 30% increase from the revaluation. We won't see another revaluation until the mid-year, and that's got another couple of years. So all you're seeing is this little increase in new construction that we'll see anyway. That's what you typically see in the other years. You see that 1%, 2%, .5% that we see. So the big ones come every six years, then we do a mid-year, three-year increase. One mil, we always ask that question. One mil collects approximately $1.2 million. That's at a 98% collection rate. That's kind of what we estimate our collection rate to be. Our property tax effective rates, this is what we actually pay. It's not what we pass because of, you know, certain House Bill 920 and things that we have. As evaluations go up, the mileage goes down on a number of our emergency levies. So as you look at this, you see a decline as our evaluations have gone up or we've reduced a mileage, okay? So if there's something that we've reduced. And you'll see in those last two years, the board voted to suspend $1 million of its emergency levy. And then next year's, in 2024, we'll see a half a year of that $2.35 million suspension of that emergency levy. So we'll see half of that come through. So the 1 million is really between 24 and 25. The 2.35 will be between 25 and 26. So as we see that, because we don't collect them all in one calendar, we collect them in a calendar year, but not at this school year. And you'll see that 3.75 in the orange, that's that drop off of that 2.75 mil PI levy that we had for the roots. So that's what you see, that large decline there as well. And then in 2020, 2021, that decrease is really related to the Newberry territory transfer as we reduce our mileage by two mils for the West Yaga residents. And we decreased, Newberry was able to decrease theirs by about 14%. If we look at our effective tax rate as compared to the other districts in Yaga County, these are all the ones that are collecting taxes in Yaga County. You'll note that West Yaga is third. Now Berkshire has, that's their property taxes, but they also have an income tax, so it's not included in there. So if you were to convert that to a mileage, that would fall down below us as well. So we're right there in the 23.98 is our effective mileage. And that includes the 1 mil PI levy, not just in our property levy. Property tax collections, you'll see this big dip, sorry about that. We collect usually around, this is how we get to our 98%. Historically, we collect about 98%. We had some Newberry territory transfers that were some off-years. We had some collections. We had a pup delinquency that dropped us to 95% because that was collected in the next year. So, but on average, we collect about 98%. That's what the county will certify for us. So that seems to be an ongoing, a good percentage for us. This next year, I anticipate we'll collect probably closer to 100% based on what we're seeing so far in the first collections. Estimated taxes, there are going to be levies for the 2025, 2026 fiscal year. General fund will be $25.8 million. This is in the general fund. That includes our 001 fund and the 016, which is our emergency levies. So you'll see 25 plus the 4.8, so that'll be included all in the general fund. It says emergency fund, but it's all included in our general fund when we do our financials. And then the permanent improvement fund, that again is 1 mil, and that goes into our 003 account in that we use for any projects, construction projects, repair projects that last for over five years.
Karen, that 2% is generally not collected, or when we say 98, is it? Can they tell where it's from? Is it usually from the same place?
We had a delinquency of a bankrupted pipeline that we could tell. But we get a list of all the delinquencies. And sometimes, you know, as you sell your property, you have to bring them up to speed, whoever's buying them, or some of them may have to go up to speed. That one has held out there because of different laws related to public utilities. But we can tell who it is. And it's usually someone who's didn't get to pay something like this. Last year, we had a big, you know, they didn't pay it on time. They must've gone on vacation and didn't pay them on time. But they paid them the next month. So we see a lot of that. So it may be a timing issue. Generally, we've seen a slight decline, but nothing significant.
And the county goes after that?
The county goes after that. But when you go to sell your property or...
Yeah.
Have I seen them foreclose on this? No, we don't get full closures. We haven't seen them do that at all.
Thank you.
Most people will pay those taxes initially.
Hey Karen?
Yes, sir.
Is that emergency fund another indication of the, I'll say the legally enforced poor choice of words?
Yes, that is a poor choice of words for us.
That's good.
An emergency levy is basically a fixed fee in a fixed period of time, for a fixed period of time. So you'll collect, in our case, we have two emergency levies, one for 3.7 million and one for 2.35 million. They collect the same amount, but they've been collecting since 2003 and 2005. They don't go up, they don't go down. The mileage goes up and down, but the amount that we collect doesn't go up or down. And every 10 years, it used to be every five years. We extended it to 10 years in the last levy. The voters get a chance to re-up that, you know, to renew that levy. So it is a, the wording that we're given from the state, it's the one that we, you know, we had to live with. But it is not an emergency per se from a standpoint. It is meaning that you might have a deficit, that you're running into a deficit. And that's the reason that you would have a levy, is if the board looked at their financials in the next five years and they had a deficit spending or had a deficit coming up, that they would have a levy on the ballot. It's just not continuing.
So you said one of these was a levy that was initially passed in 2005?
One with 2003, one with 2005.
So that 2005, 20 years ago, would have been the last time that we had asked for new money?
It is the last time that we were on the ballot for new money, yes. Now, again, when you have a revaluation, you might have new funds that come in from the revaluation if it's
Right, but...
the inside millage. But this is the last time we were asking voters for new money.
On the ballot, yeah.
But, you know, our levies, as we know, are coming up for renewal.
Right.
These are coming up for renewals as well. When you look at the general funding comparison, this year's estimate, you know, the updated estimate that we have from five-year forecast to this year's estimate, you'll see a slight increase in the property taxes. That is because the 1 mil is falling off and that half the 2.35 is falling off. We're picking up a little bit of that 1 mil levy coming back on to our, back into our revenue in 2026. Homestead rollback stays pretty much the same, but you're picking up a little bit of that because of a half a million dollars in emergency levy coming back into our revenues. School foundation, we're keeping that relatively flat. We don't know what 2026 will look like. It's the third phase of the school funding, new school funding, and we don't know what that's gonna look like until the budget's done. And the budget won't be done until the spring. And then we see other revenue, 3.7 to 2.6, mostly related to a cash spend down in our general fund. And that's in interest. We're still seeing our interest rates stay very healthy. So we're able to leverage that. We put a lot of that in CDs. We put that into longer-term assets as we're looking at investments as we're trying to maximize that interest income for the district. General fund revenues, as you look at this, the orange is what we have in actual. The blue is our projected from our five-year forecast. And you'll see that little dip. So the orange that you're seeing, the 1.9, 3.7, those are the emergency levies that need to be renewed. There's a 3.7 million emergency levy that will need to be renewed. So you're seeing that if we don't have those and we don't renew them, you'll see the dip in our revenue that we would take. So they're necessary from a standpoint of keeping our revenues at, really at a flat level as you go on to 2027. And as we look at this graph, this is one we've lived together with the Finance Committee, as we look at our cash balance as a percentage of expenditures, you'll notice in 2025, whereas we'd be about 65%, that starts to decline as our expenditures start to exceed our revenues. If we look at '25, '26, '27, we're really break even, is what I'm saying. And then starting in '28, '29, and '30, we'll see that split off. So the orange is if we renew the 3.7 million emergency levy, and then that gray dip is if we do not. So you'll see that as significant impact by 2029 and 2030. So that renewal is necessary for our district to continue its, you know, its programming that they're wanting to do without making any changes or significant changes. One thing that we do keep track of is our debt margin as we're looking at, of course, a bond levy that's on the agenda tonight. We want to look at that debt margin and we want to see how that's increased. So we started out in 2014, when I started here, it was 57 million. We slowly progressed up as we saw the Newberry transfer. That gave us an additional, you know, $30 million in debt margin. And when you're looking at how much can you borrow, that's important. And then now with the revaluation, we're up to $113 million. So anything that's within that is, we do not have to have special permission to, but excess of that, we would have to have the state authorize that. When you look at the state's authorization, the calculation, we can borrow up to $200 million without, through their authorization. It has some pretty loose rules, but what our revenue base would be able to take, would be able to repay. And that is, in that chart, there's details for you. You have a detailed report in your package.
Can you go back to the one with the cash? Yeah, so if, even with the renewals, just so I'm sure, we'd be at 36%?
Right, we'll be at 36%. And that, of course, you know, in 2025, we're, we have a $2 million transfer to our capital account to take care of some of the middle school capital projects that we have in place. And in 2026, we have another million dollars that we're anticipating. And in 2027. So we're continuing to fund our PI or our capital expenditure funds because we have additional capital needs here in the district that we need to take care of that are not really outside of long-term financing. We can do those internally.
So how does that 1 million, 2 million that you just mentioned, how's that show up here?
Shows up in those balances, in the percentages. It includes it. Those transfers are included in those balances.
So it would be a lower percentage if you took those out?
No, it would be a higher percentage.
Higher percentage. Oh, they are, okay, I got it.
So they're already included in these balances. Because the board's already authorized those that aren't careful enough to make those transfers.
Yeah, I was just thinking, if they've already been transferred out, then we have less cash, don't we?
We do, but they're, but they were anticipated in our forecast that we would make those transfers.
Okay.
If we increase those transfers, then certainly that does change the balances that we have available.
Yeah, okay.
And that's just depending on how we perform this year or next year. We can make some modifications to that transfer. We might want to make them sooner, might want to postpone one, but I see no reason not to make the $2 million transfer. Alright? Okay, good.
Makes it easier when you do. Alright, okay. And there are no public comments for this part of the meeting?
Yes, you have to open it up for public comments on the budget hearing itself.
Okay. Does anybody have anything to say about our budget? Okay, awesome. Okay, next, organization of the board for 2025?
Yes. Alright, so if I can have a motion to open the floor for nominations?
So moved.
We don't need a second. So if I can just have a vote to open the nominations? Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Ms. Claypool?
Yes.
Ms. Sherwood?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Levinworth?
Yes.
Alright, now we can open the floor for nominations.
I will nominate Christina.
Are there any other nominations?
This is for him.
Yes.
Okay. No other nominations? Call the roll, please.
Can I have a motion to close the nominations?
So moved.
Second.
I'll vote on that. Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Ms. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Levinworth?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
I will abstain.
Alright, resolution, you don't have to abstain yet. Resolution one, the Board of Education of the West Yaga Local School District hereby nominates Christina Sherwood for the President of the West Yaga Board of Education for the calendar year 2025. If I can have a roll call? Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Levinworth?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
No, I will abstain.
You can vote for yourself.
You can vote for yourself.
Would you like to do your oath of office?
Sure.
You gotta raise that right hand.
It's just a really big right hand. It makes it extra special.
That's funny.
I swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio. And I will faithfully and impartially perform my duties as President of the Board of Education of the West Yaga Local School District of Yaga County, Ohio, to the best of my ability and in accordance with the laws now in effect and here being enacted. Here are my continuance in this said office until my successor is elected and qualified.
I do.
Alright, let's go ahead and hear, you'll be assigned.
Well, it's gonna be interesting.
Okay. You will kind of scribble.
I'll do the best I can. I need an OT right now. Oh, that's not, that's not terrible.
That's pretty good.
You kind of scribble your name anyway.
I do, yeah, it's not legible ever, so.
Okay, if I can have a motion to open the negotiations for the Vice President?
So moved.
Second.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Levinworth?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Open the floor for nominations?
I nominate Dr. Beers.
Second.
Any other nominations?
If I can have a motion to close the nominations?
So moved.
I need a second to close. Thank you. Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Levinworth?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Resolution two, the Board of Education of the West Yaga Local School District hereby nominates William Beers for Vice President of the West Yaga Board of Education for the calendar year 2025. Roll call, Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Levinworth?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Alright, Dr. Beers, come on.
I solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio. Now, I will faithfully and impartially perform my duties as Vice President of the Board of Education of the West Yaga Local School District in Yaga County, Ohio, to the best of my ability and in accordance with the laws now in effect and here being enacted during my continuance in said office until my successor is elected and qualified.
I do.
Sir? Signing here.
Alright, thank you so much. Congratulations to our President and Vice President.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, we'll continue on with the organizational meeting. Resolution three, to approve the 2025 board meeting dates, time, and location that are attached.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Levinworth?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Resolution four, to establish, to approve the establishment of the Service Fund for the Board of Education.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Levinworth?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Resolution five, to approve the 2025 compensation for board members.
So moved.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Ms. Levinworth?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Alright, before we have the resolution, I guess, well, let's put it on. Resolution to approve the board appointments on behalf of the board for the 2025 school year.
So moved.
Second.
Alright, discussion, if we have these positions, the OSBA Legislative Liaison. A board...
Okay.
Thank you. OSBA Student Achievement Liaison. There we go, I like it.
Thank you, Mary Michelle.
OSBA Capital Conference Delegate.
I will be the delegate.
And we'll need an alternate.
I'll do it again.
Thank you, Dr. Beers. The following are the West Yaga Joint Rec District Commissioners, Frank Formacelli, Krista Mokas, and Kristen Foister. Is that right? Mr. Formacelli's runs out in 2025, so you'll need to open that up for a new trustee or have that opening.
I'd like to put an add-in close to now-ish so that we have time, because I know we were way behind the last time. I don't want that to happen again. I would like to have this sealed by the time that appointment technically runs out so that if Mr. Formacelli is still interested, he can send me a letter and then we can open it up for other people as well. I know we had several interested parties the last time.
Okay.
I think he's still interested.
I'm sure, but I just want to, I just want to do it right, so...
No, I think that's what I do. I think too that we need to pursue and push them to, I don't know, Karen and I have checked into it, but to see whether we can get Newberry to the Joint Rec Board to agree to allow Newberry to appoint three representatives to...
That would be fair. So for now, we'll just run the ad for the April appointment.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Levinworth?
Yes.
Resolution seven, to adopt operating protocol for the regular meetings as listed on the agenda.
So moved.
Eight, oh. No, it's number eight, but Resolution seven, sorry.
Did you get my motion?
Yes, I did.
Any discussion?
I have you as a second?
Yeah.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Levinworth?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Resolution eight, to approve the authorization resolution for the January 1st, 2025 through December 31st, 2025 for the Treasurer. Those are as listed.
So moved.
Second, any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Levinworth?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Resolution nine, to authorize the Treasurer to file tax and counter-tax complaints for the board.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Levinworth?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Resolution ten, to approve the designation of newspapers to include the News Herald, The Plain Dealer, The Shkrein Valley Times, The Chesterland News, and the Yaga County Maple Leaf, which is where we send our public notice.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Ms. Levinworth?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Resolution eleven to approve the representation of legal counsel to include Brinza McIntyre and Seed, Ohio School Council's Legal Assistance Fund, Booker Grayden LLP, and Weston Hurd LLP.
So moved.
Second, any, any discussion?
Yeah, does, I lose track of who's doing what here. Does this include our, our bond counsel as well?
Yes, Booker will be handling any levies and bonds, and Weston Hurd is general counsel.
General counsel, right.
And then Brinza handles our property tax complaints.
Our property, oh, oh, okay.
Call the roll, please.
Ms. Levinworth?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Resolution twelve to approve the 2025 membership in the Ohio School Boards Association.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Levinworth?
Yes.
Resolution thirteen, authorizing the 2025-2026 membership in the Ohio High School Athletic Association.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Levinworth?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Resolution fourteen to approve the designation of Taylor Insurance Group as a health insurance broker consulting for the calendar year 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Levinworth?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Resolution fifteen to authorize the Board President and Treasurer to borrow funds if necessary.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Levinworth?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Resolution sixteen. Oh, did I skip one?
Missed me.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mrs. Claypool.
Yes.
I'm sorry. Whoops.
Going a little too fast.
I was going a little too fast, I'll slow down. Resolution sixteen to adopt the 2024-2020, it's 2025-2026 alternate tax budget.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Ms. Levinworth?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
All right. Resolution seventeen to approve the authorization resolution for January first, 2025 through December 31st, 2025 for the Superintendent.
So moved.
Second, any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Levinworth?
Yes.
Resolution eighteen, appointment of designated staff appointments for the 2025 calendar year.
So moved, I'm sorry, so moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
I, I just have a question on this for the first two, it says Assistant Superintendent and Director of Instructional Technology, but what happens when Dr. Benincasa is no longer the Assistant Superintendent? Do we have to word this?
What will happen is we'll make an amendment to this at the time of, because I don't know what the new position will be yet.
Okay, thanks.
Call the roll, please.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Levinworth?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Resolution nineteen to approve the support groups for the 2025 calendar year. We have an addition to our list from prior year of the West Yaga Performing Arts Booster Club.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, and I know that we talked earlier this week about doing our due diligence to try and oversee to make sure that all the support groups are handling their money appropriately so that there's at least the notion of oversight, even though we're not.
They are separate legal entities, so what the board has requested is Dr. Markwart to send a memorandum out to each board member, out to each board of the support organizations to remind them of their obligations under our board policies to continue to be a school support organization, so.
Not merely financial, but policy as well, and.
We have additional policies besides that.
I will do that as soon as these are all approved, I'll send them.
And that, and that would include the advertising and spend some time on it.
Yes. Okay, call the roll, please.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Levinworth?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Resolution twenty, resolution to adjourn the tax budget hearing, organizational board hearing, organizational board meeting, and convene the regular board meeting at seven oh three.
So moved. Second, call the roll, please.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Levinworth?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
All right.
Okay, so now we're opening the regular board meeting?
Yeah, we'll call the meeting to order.
I need to hit the gavel again?
If you like.
I don't, no, it's fine.
Okay.
Um, can you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Levinworth?
Yes.
Are there any additions or changes to the agenda?
We do have one addition to the agenda, Resolution thirty-seven A. It's an amendment to a transportation agreement that was made in December. We have to make another amendment to it.
Okay.
Due to student need.
Okay. Um, all right, and we have any, there's no one signed up for public remarks?
Oh, wait, we need to approve the agenda as changed.
Oh, sorry.
I have a motion?
Do we have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Call the roll, please. Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Levinworth?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Okay, and there are no public remarks, do we? Okay. Um, okay, so we're moving on to routine items.
All right, Resolution twenty-one to approve routine matters to the West Yaga Local School Board of Education.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Levinworth?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Resolution twenty-two to approve the warrants for the December 2024.
So moved.
Second, any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Levinworth?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Resolution twenty-three to accept donations from the Jogga Retired Teachers Association of $250.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Ms. Levinworth?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Resolution twenty-four to approve amendment to the Student Activity Statement of Purpose and Budget for the 2024-2025 school year for the High School Student Council.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Levinworth?
Yes.
Dr. Markwart? You're up.
Oh, I thought, I don't vote unless we really change the rules.
I'll make you ahead of those. Surprise! You're now voting.
Resolution twenty-five is to approve a certified staff appointment for the 24-25 school year.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Levinworth?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Resolution twenty-six is to accept a certified staff resignation.
So moved.
Second, any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Levinworth?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes. Resolution twenty-seven is to approve a revised certified long-term substitute assignment. This is for a school counselor who is in, working with us while one of our counselors is on leave.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Levinworth?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Resolution twenty-eight is to approve a classified staff appointment for the 2024-2025 school year.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Ms. Levinworth?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Resolution twenty-nine is to approve a change in a classified staff contract for the 24-25 school year.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Levinworth?
Yes.
Resolution thirty is to accept classified staff resignations. So moved.
Second, any discussion?
Just a question, because I noticed, I think there's three proctors leaving. Is that normal to have a lot of turnover in that?
It is difficult to get proctors because it's such a short-term assignment, it's for a few hours a day, and some people may try it out and decide it's not for them, so it's not uncommon to have that.
Call the roll, please.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Levinworth?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Resolution thirty-one is to accept revised classified staff resignation.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
How is this different than the group before? Is it the date that changed on this? The date. The resignation date changed.
The resignation date changed.
Oh, okay, that's why it's revised rather than, a new one. That's why it's revised. Yeah. When the other, okay, got it.
Okay, call the roll, please.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Levinworth?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes. Resolution thirty-two is to approve a service contract for the 2024-2025 school year.
So moved.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Levinworth?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Resolution thirty-three is to approve the Pigeon Forge Spring Training Softball Trip in the spring of 2025.
So moved.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Ms. Levinworth?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Resolution thirty-four is to approve the First Amendment to the Agreement for Supplemental Student Transportation Services between Community Bus Services Incorporated and West Yaga Local Schools.
So moved. Any discussion?
Is this the one where we're adding?
Yes, and this is necessary because we have new retirement and we have two on medical leave, one of whom may turn into a retirement. So we're, until we get our new people through the pipeline and trained in our buses, this is sort of a, a stopgap.
Are, are we close to getting, last time we talked, I think we had two that we thought were, be ready in January.
Yes, Scott, do you know the dates when they'll be complete?
Yeah, I know, it takes. Okay, how many external drivers are we using right now?
Four from CVS, correct, Karen?
Four, this would be the four.
And that's why we're updating the contract?
Because we have two.
We only agreed to two, yeah.
Two now and we'll be adding two more.
Yeah, because I was gonna say, this says up to four, okay. All right.
And it's temporary, we hope to have our people in place. We really do not have any desire to outsource our transportation.
And this still falls under the MOU of this sunsetting.
Yeah, till the end of this fiscal year, incorrect.
Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Levinworth?
Yes.
Resolution thirty-five is to declare emergency circumstances to purchase the replacement of a main heat exchanger in the 2024-2025 school year. This is for the high school. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Seems like all of our heating sources are kind of going out at the same time in our, our various buildings. Boilers at the elementaries and then this heat exchanger at the high schools is, it's something that we have to watch. And of course, these things happen, you know, the worst time of the year sometimes when you're in the winter, you need heat in the buildings for a lot of reasons, not just comfort, but keeping pipes thawed, et cetera. Yeah, keep the pipes thawed, yeah. Yeah, and it's also probably seeing them all kind of, I'll say grouped together, is reflective of the fact that all of them are getting very old. Getting old together. Yes. Like some of the rest of us.
That's why my heat exchange.
Sounds like me.
See, they're not aging like the Golden Girls, I can tell you that much. Whole different scenario here. Sorry, call the roll, please.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Levinworth?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Resolution thirty-six is to approve the service agreement between Public School Works and West Yaga Local Schools.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Is this a new, is this new or just a renewal?
It's the same one that we have every year. Is it modified any this year, have we added anything to it? Public School Works?
Yes. We added a threat component. As part of the disciplinary portion of it, we added a threat identification assessment that can be added to this.
Okay.
That's part of that notification.
It's a package that we utilize every year.
Right. So we had a five-year contract before that has gone up in the fifth year, so now we're entering into a four-year contract.
Right, I saw that.
Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh? Ms. Leavenworth?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes. Resolution thirty-seven is to approve the addendum to the twenty-four, twenty-six school year aligned school district service agreement between West Jaga Local Schools and the ESC of the Western Reserve.
Second. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Leavenworth?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
This is actually, per Karen's explanation to me, a credit to us that would result in about twelve thousand five hundred per year of services. Okay? Resolution thirty-seven A is to approve the school transportation contract between Buckeye Logistics and Transit and West Jaga Local Schools.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Call the roll. Sorry.
So this was an additional because of a particular student need?
It relates to a student need and increased support for that student.
Call the roll, please.
Ms. Leavenworth?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Resolution thirty-six is a resolution to proceed with an issue of bonds.
Thirty-eight.
I'm thirty-eight, I'm sorry. I was following Kathy's lead from earlier. Resolution thirty-eight is a resolution to proceed with an issue of bonds.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Leavenworth?
Yes.
Okay, and then we're moving on to discussion of new business and suggestions to be included on the future agenda, and I see the middle school handbook is on here.
Correct. We'll be asking for approval of the middle school handbook and the high school handbook in February, but we'll get those to you in short order so that you can preview those.
Okay.
There's one thing, remember, that came up as an issue for us with regard to the depiction of weapons.
Yes.
I want to make sure that that's addressed in the middle school handbook because we'd made insurance to the parent who brought the complaint that we would look into it and try to craft some language. I'd ask for any input that you had. I've received none from you. It's a hard one to do. I think, Mary Michelle, you had pretty much the closest resolution to it, the closest explanation in terms of not quelching free speech, but then also we need to understand that there are certain times when some items and or words could be depicted in an instructional setting. So I may, I may pick your brain a little bit on that when I put the language together and say, what do you think of this?
And I think we have to make sure that it's very clear in our assignments.
And I think clear to our staff, too, so that the staff understands when it's necessary to report an item to the principal and when it's not necessary and they can handle it in the classroom with a conversation.
But for next month, that will be the course guide. So in February, you'll see the course guides. The handbook will be a little bit later.
When's the handbook coming out?
We always do it in the summer.
In the summer?
It's more like June.
Oh, okay. So it's just the course guide next time?
Course guide, yeah.
All right, I was mistaken on that, so.
Do we know when the school year calendars are coming out for next year?
They should be on February.
Okay. We've had a couple of emails.
We tried to get it for January. There's one piece that we are talking with our teaching staff about.
Okay. Okay, very good. Okay. Does anybody have anything else? Superintendent report?
Just one piece of information that's probably obvious to you because you've all gotten notifications from the Ohio School Boards Association saying that you're superheroes. I'm not expecting you to don tights and capes for that, but I will say thank you to each and every one of you for your roles as board members. It's kind of a thankless job, and I know that what we see here is the tip of the iceberg because we see the public sessions where the board takes action. But that doesn't account for the many, many conversations that you have with the residents of the district and the people who contact you with concerns that you then relay to us. You really are stewards of the district and you really are a voice for the community. And sometimes that's a hard position to be in because you have to know what to say and what not to say to the many people who elected you. So I want to thank you because I know that you're not in it for the money, and I want to thank you for the times when I have to call you and, you know, and express a concern or alert you to a concern. And I thank you for relaying to me the concerns that come from the public that you would like me or one of our administrators to address. So I join the Ohio School Boards Association in thanking you for all that you do for the residents of the district and especially for the kids.
Thank you. Board reports? Anybody have anything to report? Okay, so we're going to, we need a resolution to adjourn into executive session for conference with legal counsel and negotiations.
And Rebecca Prince Horn from Booker Grayden will join us via phone.
Okay. And you and Dr. Mark Ward as well?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Is Dr. Benacasa?
And Dr. Benacasa. Okay. And there will be no action taken after executive session?
Correct.
So moved.
Second. Call the roll, please.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Leavenworth?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
We can go here.
You blame it on me?
I did.
And it wasn't, it wasn't even the same number. It wasn't even the same number. No, it wasn't the same.
All right, reconvened at eight oh five.
Okay. All right, so we are reconvening at eight oh five and we have our next board meeting. I have no glasses on, full of, I'm trying to do this this way. On Monday, February tenth, twenty twenty-five, at seven P. M. here in the board office community room. Do we have a resolution to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Leavenworth?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.